Good evening, everyone, and I am calling this Providence City Council meeting on June 5th, 2025 to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller?
Present.
Deputy Majority Whip Vander Bois. Councilwoman Anthony. Majority Leader Espinal.
Present.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Present.
Councilwoman Graves. Majority, Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Present.
Councilwoman Peterson. Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Present.
Councilor Royas.
Present.
Councilwoman Ryan. Majority Whip Sanchez.
Present.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Ana Vargas. Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Here.
You have fourteen present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, the invocation will be given by Councilwoman Ryan. Will everyone please stand, including our guests? I'll take. Is it on now? Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Goncalves. Tonight, I ask for your blessing on my colleagues elected to serve the great, the people of the great city of Providence. Remind us, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for the political debate, they were not only leaders but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to humbly serve the common good of all. Remind us that, no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, and those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true to our charge. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Dear Lord, may your light unfold us, may your spirit guide us, and may your grace abound in us. Amen. Thank you, Counselor. This evening, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Miguel Sanchez.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my absolute honor to welcome the Mount Pleasant Kilties Unified Basketball Team, our 2025 state champions, to the People's House. Let's give them a round of applause right now. I'd like to also recognize that Superintendent Javier Martinez is with us as well. Thank you very much for your leadership and support always. As we all know, any athletic pursuit requires hard work, determination, and most importantly, teamwork. But this unified team is special. It is made up of Mount Pleasant students with developmental disabilities and students without disabilities. As Coach Pinto says, "When they play together, those differences dissolve." They are just athletes trying to move the ball down the court. This team is an inspiration to all. Their positive spirit of inclusion, acceptance, and respect, and yes, great coaching, results in setting a school record. They have taken the big prize, the Unified Basketball State Championship, for the first time in the school's very long history. It is quite, it is quite, it is quite an accomplishment, and we are very proud of each team member. We also extend our heartfelt thanks and congratulations to Coach Zach Pinto for his leadership in support of the Mount Pleasant High School little, uh, school athletic director Paul Rayo, who is not with us tonight. I want to particularly thank Council President, who has graciously treated you all to a wonderful pizza party in the Alderman's Chamber. Thank you. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your win. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and congratulations to everyone. Item three, please.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item three and move approval.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item three? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item four.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item four.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item four? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Please note item four as received.
So noted.
Item five.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items five through seven.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items five through seven? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item five to the Committee on Finance and note six and seven as received.
So noted.
And before item eight, I would like to ask Pro Temp Pichardo to chair items eight through ten.
Thank you. Item number eight.
Mr. President.
Majority Leader Espinal.
Motion to weigh the reading of item eight and nine and pass for the second time on a roll call vote.
Second, Mr. President.
The motion has been made and second, any discussion? Seeing none, or those in favor? Our discussion on number eight.
I know I've rose before on this same issue, but I have to rise again to, uh, just say how proud I was of, and just thinking about all our work that we do here in this council. On Monday, I was able to join Crossroads as they, uh, ground, did groundbreaking.
Madam Pre-
For the first time. Yes, sir.
Uh, this is, uh, item number eight. I think you were referring to item number nine?
Madam, number nine, sir.
It's eight and nine, so she's allowed to speak.
Yes, I'm discussing nine. Sorry about that. Yeah, make it clear. Item number nine is passing of the CBDG budget. You voted on it the last time, but I also want to rise and tell you how proud I am of this council for really taking houses really, really serious. I'm also proud of the award this council received, um, also, um, last week as well, right? This week as well. I'm rising because the first, these houses were the first ones around health and housing. A lot of people, we heard a testimony, uh, Majority Leader and I, of a lot of people who are scheduled for operations. Because they are homeless, they cannot be scheduled for operations simply because they don't have a place to return to in recovery. So that's, uh, thirty-five units will be built on Pine Street, Ward 11, and we welcome these houses to the community to serve the people who are marginalized and underserved. So again, I want to thank you and congratulations on the award.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Council President Miller.
Aye on item eight and recuse on item nine.
Deputy Majority Whip Vander Bois.
Aye on both items.
Councilwoman Anthony. Majority Leader Espinal.
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson. Aye. Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye on both items.
Councilor Royas.
Aye on both.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez.
Aye on A, recuse on nine.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Ana Vargas. Aye. Councilman Oscar Vargas.
Aye.
You have fourteen ayes and one absent on item eight. You have twelve ayes, two recusals, and one absent on item nine. The motion carries. The matters are passed for the second time on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, item number ten. Majority Leader.
Uh, Pro Temp, that will be item eleven.
Ten.
We did, uh, eight and nine, now we're on.
Excuse me.
Yep, it's okay.
Motion to weigh the reading of item ten.
Second, Mr. President.
Uh, the motion has been made. There's a second. Uh, any discussion?
Chair.
Madam President.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. I know, um, people have a lot of opinions on this particular item, um, and I just, I have, I just want to share my intent and, um, ask for people to keep a very open mind as it makes its way through committee and, I think, moves a conversation that we really do need to have around, um, equity and enforcement. Um, so there are almost eight hundred healthcare workers on strike at Belair Hospital. Many, um, folks have joined us here tonight. Thank you for joining us. Um, I have joined the strike multiple times. There's not a single person walking that line who would not rather be at their job doing the work they do every day to take care of people from across the state. Not a single person. Uh, they give outstanding care. They are taking this step, uh, and it is a major sacrifice because they are working in unsafe condi- conditions, often for poverty level wages. They are on strike for their rights and wages, but their strike, as all are, like anytime that anyone stands up for their rights on the job, it lifts all of us up. It sets new standards. It creates the rights we have today, the rights we will have tomorrow. So I want to take a moment to very sincerely thank the workers of Belair Hospital, not for being here today, but for being out on the line every day. Thank you very much. And as many folks might know, they have been, as they're on the picket line, they've been fined repeatedly for violations of the noise ordinance at five hundred dollars a pop. Um, so I am sure I'm not alone as being a counselor who has a lot of frustrations with the noise ordinance and how it gets enforced. It can feel chaotic. I have, I am well aware of kind of repeat offenders um, in the neighborhood who have never received a fine. Um, and some neighbors who have called me repeatedly and sort of said like, "Why can't you do anything about this problem? That's actually a problem." We're not talking about people who are partying in the street. We're talking about people who are standing up and defending their rights. And so, um, what I'm asking is that this helps us, as we move this into committee, that this proposed amendment helps us have a really serious conversation about, uh, how this ordinance is applied to different neighborhoods across the city and to whom it is applied to. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Any further discussion? Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, uh, Pro Temp. Um, no, I just want to rise in strong support of this, uh, amendment to this noise ordinance and of much gratitude to, uh, Council President for introducing it, um, and definitely share the, also the gratitude to all the workers that have joined us today, um, and that keep our city, uh, running on a day-to-day basis. Um, I'll, I'll be more direct. Um, it's a shame that the Smiley administration is issuing these fines to, to begin with. Um, these are, uh, workers that are, are fighting, uh, for their right to, to, to work in, in safe conditions. And the fact that, uh, this administration is, is making that, uh, fight more difficult, in my opinion, is completely unacceptable. It's, it's embarrassing, uh, to stand here as a city counselor, uh, that represents this city that's doing this action. So I, uh, hope that we move in, in a better direction, uh, in this ordinance through the, the committee process because what is happening, there's a couple of folks that have been issued multiple five hundred dollar fines. It's completely unacceptable. It's, it's embarrassing, um, and it's the complete opposite of standing with workers. Thank you, Pro Temp.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Sanchez. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilwoman Ana Vargas.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. For me, um, the annoying control, it has to give it, you know, notice to the people to get a little information because people found it when they had received some tickets. Where, where is that? You know, and then this is, for me, it's not good because it's not giving the information to all. So we have this, you have to precaution, and then we can continue with that. So I received some-
Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Council, uh, Council President. I'd like to speak on items fourteen and fifteen, um, very briefly, and just touch on the impetus of why I'm doing, we, I've put these forward. Um, councilors, I'd like to take a moment to share the concerns of my neighborhood. For decades, students have lived in the Elmhurst community and just, and for just as long, spent a little bit of a source of tension, often met with frustration and resistance from residents. At times, the college in my ward has worked with the counselor and community to reduce its impact and build a more collaborative relationship. But lately, what we're seeing goes beyond frustration. What we're facing now is a loss of quality of life. Families are being pushed out, not by accident, because simply they cannot take the imbalance any longer. The source of entitlement, I'm sorry, the sense of entitlement, the noise, the lack of respect for longstanding neighbors. In some cases, this feels like an intentional decimation of the working-class community to make room for enrollment growth. Right now, my neighbors in Wanscock are bearing the brunt of this. I've seen it firsthand. Developers harassing people, always knocking on their doors, sometimes finding them at their workplaces, pressuring them to sell. Let me be clear. I actually believe in economic opportunity. I believe people should be able to build their wealth and take the opportunity when it's possible. But more and more, I find myself asking, "At what cost?" Over the past two years, I've watched house after house, and now street after street get gentrified to accommodate a transient population. Students come off campus in their senior year and push the envelope just a little further than the class before. Now they actually document it all. We're going to go a little bit congressional style, and I'm going to show you. Behind me, you'll just see some of what my constituents deal with on a Thursday, a Friday, a Saturday, and sometimes on a Sunday night. Sunday day, sometimes during the day, sometimes at night, sometimes both. Over here, some of these pictures are from freshman, uh, freshman day move-in. Some of them are just random nights. What happens on this side is the encroachment that's happening to some of my neighbors that have remained on liege in hopes of being able to just maintain their peace and their quality of life. My neighbors have pleaded with students to keep the noise down, stop urinating on their property, stop sleeping on the sidewalks. They've been insulted and ignored. I've had parents call me and email me, upset that changes to parking, meaning meant to ease congestion, are ruining their child's senior year. The community has begged the college for help, but their response? Minimal. In a place that claims to serve both God and neighbor, it's the neighbor part that's been missing. They use our city as a learning lab, but leave our communities to continue cleaning up the mess. We've tried to engage with the developers, and we've received more expansion, not less. Police details sponsored by the college provide minimal help, but this also brings us another set of problems. I say this with all sincerity, and I believe this in my core. What is allowed in my area would never be allowed down the street of my neighborhood with kids that look like me or the majority of this council. So what did we do? We organized. We met for months. Constituents from across this city sat with college reps that, that came, the developers that, that came to show up. We clearly said to them, "Families are still living here. Please respect us. Please respect that." And what did we get in return? More expansion. Now more encroachment. People who have worked their whole lives to buy their home now have to defend it, literally, from those trying to wear them down. What you see here is less than one foot away from somebody else's property. One bad rainstorm, and this man is fearful that his whole property goes down. This isn't redevelopment, and it's certainly not prosperity. This actually borders on harassment. I'm especially disappointed in the attorneys that are bankrolled by these bad actors. If you've ever had a put, a footprint in this city, I really hope that your coffers are full because it's clear you're selling out your community to the highest bidder. So colleagues, what I'm bringing forward today are a few ordinances meant to restore balance, some small balance affected by off-campus student housing. These aren't new ideas. We've drawn from policies that are already working in other cities facing the same challenges. A few more will come, and I hope you'll consider those for passage as well. I invite all of you to take a ride with me through Ward fourteen. See it with your own eyes. And consider that while we all support the goal of density for Providence, of more density for Providence, which I absolutely do, it shouldn't come at the cost of a community soul. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on items, uh, Councilman Goncalves.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the sponsor for her leadership on these initiatives. It's so critically important that we're moving this forward, and I urge my colleagues to support this, but also for us to move with swift passage. The reason is, as my council colleague alluded to, is people are having their quality of life significantly undermined by transient college students. And while those folks are, are constituents to a certain extent, we must prioritize the people who live in the city, the long-term residents who have invested in the city, and the people who call Providence home. In Fox Point in particular, and I grew up in Fox Point, so I know it very vividly, uh, we have seen lots of gentrification in the neighborhood. And that's largely due to the fact that we have students competing for the same housing stock as long-term residents. And a lot of those residents, Portuguese, Irish, Cape Verdean immigrants who helped build that community, um, have largely been displaced and pushed out. And this is an opportunity to not only right those wrongs from a justice perspective, but to also think about where we go forward, move, uh, moving, moving on from here. And these are common sense policies. This is a way for students to pay their fair share, for students who rely on the same municipal services that everybody- services that everybody else relies on in the city, whether it's police, or fire protection, or emergency response, or street maintenance, to also chip in and ensure that they're doing their part to alleviate the burden that so many of our residents are experiencing across the city. As all of you know, we're experiencing a tax increase this year. And I think, as opposed to continually pushing that burden onto the long-term residents in our city who are already struggling with the high cost of living, we need to be looking at the large tax-exempt institutions and the way that they continue to expand their footprints at the expense of everybody else. If you think about Brown, for example, in Fox Point, they have an over $3 billion assessment. And fifty, that would be $50 million to the city coffers every year if they were taxed like everyone else. So asking students to pay a small student impact fee, just like they pay student service fees, or they pay student activity fees on campus, is pretty reasonable. And if they're going to rely on the same services that we all rely on, and they intend to contribute back to our community, I think this is the way that they can certainly do it. And I think the registry is also a critically important piece, because one of the things that these large tax-exempt institutions fail to share with us, year after year after year after year, despite us asking, is whether or not they're going to raise their enrollment rates. So, we don't know. If you ask Brown University very pointedly, do you have any intentions to raise your enrollment rates, they will never give you a straight answer. But if they do that, and we have no idea, that just continually puts downward pressure on the people who have lived in the city for a very long time, and the people who want to call Providence home but are also hanging on by a very thread. So, I just want to say that councillor Peterson has been an advocate for these issues, and has been working tooth and nail for the last several months. I know from my own constituents who have actually been participating in this process, and they want this council to act. I think this is our opportunity to act. I think we have enormous potential to act, and really, the time is now. We need to address these nuisance behaviors that we're experiencing. We need to ensure that we're prioritizing our neighborhood and neighbors' quality of life, and I think this is the start to that very journey. So I want to thank you, councillor Peterson, for your leadership on this, and I hope everyone will join in this fight, because the long-term residents and the residents of our city and our constituents deserve it now more than ever. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Councilman Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to speak in support of items 13 and 14. In doing so, recognize and thank my colleague from Ward 14 for her fierce advocacy on behalf of her Elmhurst neighbors. She's courageously taking on the predatory student housing developers who are treating our neighborhoods like investment portfolios, forgetting that these are communities where real people live, raise families, and grow old. I attended one of the Student Housing Task Force meetings she led, and what I witnessed there has stayed with me. A neighbor that attended stood up to share his experience. He only spoke Spanish. He was showing a video of a demolition happening right next to his home. Plumes of dust, debris, potentially hazardous material flying into his property. His voice shook as he explained how this was impacting his health and his home, and then just a few seats away from me, thinking I was just some bystander. A well-known developer in this city that was implicated, that was causing the debris to fly into this neighbor's property, had made some remarks under his breath. And his name, well-known to the city, is Nico Cola Luca. And he uttered, he muttered under his breath, as a gentleman was sharing his story, he said, and I quote, "Then you should just tell, then, excuse me, then you should just sell me your house." He uttered that under his breath while I was sitting right near him. So let me be clear, this wasn't said with concern, it was said with arrogance. And in that moment, it became painfully obvious how he saw this resonate. Not as a neighbor, not as a homeowner, not as someone with valid concerns, but as someone beneath him. And you could feel it, there was this quiet contempt for the fact that the man didn't speak English, as if that made him less intelligent, as if that made him easier to displace, easier to dismiss. That's the mindset we're dealing with in this city. That wasn't just a passing comment, it was a window into how some of these developers really view communities, our communities, especially our immigrant communities, our working-class communities, our non-English-speaking communities, as obstacles, as properties to acquire, as people to ignore. We have a duty to stand up to that, to protect our neighbors, and to call this behavior out for what it is. Entitled, exploitative, and unacceptable. To my colleague from Ward 14, thank you for not backing down, because this fight isn't just about zoning or permits, it's about dignity. It's about who gets to belong in the city of Providence and our neighborhoods. And Madam President, we are not for sale. So thank you, councillor Peterson.
Thank you, councilman. Any further discussion? Councilman Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to rise in strong support of councilwoman Peterson's bills. You have 100% of my support through this process. I know some of these developers and opposition, you know, come very well-resourced, so definitely want to appreciate the courage that you're showing in implementing these bills, and that the folks from Ward 6 will stand there alongside you. But I also want to stand up and speak on item number 18, Madam President. I'm so excited to get this ordinance rolling through the process. As we all have seen the past couple decades, the middle class and the low-income, the poor are becoming squeezed out of any resources. So what this bill does is allows employees of any commercial business, there's obviously some eligibility requirements, to have the first right of purchase of said building, of said business, excuse me. We're seeing it in other places in Rhode Island, and we're starting to see it here in Providence. Massive corporations buying up our small and pop businesses. We've seen it in Onaville, we've seen it at a very well-attended and fan-favorite on Federal Hill. So this would at least allow the opportunity of the workers of said businesses to purchase, and I appreciate the support, and I'm happy and excited to get this process going. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion on items 11 through 18? Councilwoman Graves?
I too want to stand in support of 13 and 14. There's history. This has been going on for a while. At one time, it was in my ward. Now they pushed it over to councilwoman Peterson's ward, but they did it even more Back in the day, they brought these things, and they raised the rent some. Now, they're buying these things, and they're raising the rent so high that nobody can, you know, can really live in it but those college students. And we all know that it's affecting the whole city, because the properties are selling at such a high rate that the average Joe can't afford to buy a house. And if they can't afford to buy the house, then they're going to keep on going directly to them, and the rent's going to keep going high. And the rest of us that are sitting at home fighting for our little property, our taxes are going up. We have to pay more. And it's because of all that money going into a specific people or specific group's pockets. I really feel bad, because what we're seeing in those pictures is just despicable. They are doing things out there disrespecting the whole community, the whole neighborhood. They don't care about the children, they don't care about the elderly, they don't care about the vets, they just don't care anymore. And the reason they're getting away with it is because, as my other colleague said, the college doesn't give us all the information that we need, you know? And we know we're not going to get it from the developers. We have to put a stop to this. We should have put a stop to it a long time ago, but we have to put a stop to this, and whatever bills that we can to keep our city a city of residents and not a city of students. There's nothing wrong with the students, I love students. But not to take over, ruin, and then walk away. If those students were staying here, working here, investing here, that'd be one different thing, but most of them do not stay here. So I support you 100%, Shelly.
Thank you. Further, councilwoman Anthony?
It's on. What do I got?
Turn your mic.
I certainly have spoken, there we go, thank you. I certainly have spoken about similar issues to no degree as bad as what is going on in your ward, councillor Peterson. But our, there are dwellings that are being purchased around Brown, and being turned in, stuffed with students, and being turned into athletic teams. We have a lot of disregard for the neighbors up there, and it really has been a terrible problem for a very long time. I certainly have also tried to introduce ordinances unsuccessfully, so I'm sure you're going to be successful in yours, because I really think this is a citywide issue. I just would like to address the nuisance task force. We have a nuisance task force here that only really gets involved if there's criminal activity in the, you know, in the properties. And honestly, these are not criminal activities, these are student activities. They're partying, they're playing beer pong out in the street, they're just, they're playing games outside and screaming late at night. I mean, these are things that are truly, I think, the new task force, the newly constituted task force, that is going to deal specifically with these issues. These issues are, it's powerful, and it needs to be done, and I'm so appreciative for all the work you've done on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on items 11 through 18? Any further discussion before someone speaks twice? Okay, councilman Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise again, salute to my colleague, councillor Sanchez. I want to make some remarks on two ordinances that we're introducing tonight. Item 17 and 18, and they, I think, speak to a growing crisis and a growing opportunity. One rooted in housing, and the other in small business. And both are grounded in a bold urgent principle, which is the first refusal as a right of the people who make a place home. So let me start with this big idea. In a time of corporate consolidation and displacement, when people feel like decisions about their futures are being made in back rooms without them, this legislation says no more. It says that tenants and workers, the very people who maintain and give life to buildings and businesses in their city, must get their first chance to take ownership when change comes. In the business ordinance that my colleague has introduced, we create a process where employees of a qualifying business have their first right to buy their workplace if it's up for sale. Not a favor, a right, with real timelines, real disclosures, and real tools to get organized. This is not some theoretical policy imported from a think-take. This is about ensuring that when a local business owner decides it's time to move on, they aren't forced to sell to a faceless developer or private equity firm. The workers who are already familiar with the business, who have invested their sweat and soul into its success, get their first shot. And so this is about economic democracy. It's, and it shouldn't be just a dream, it's a defense. And in a city like Providence with a deep working-class history and rich immigrant culture, employee ownership isn't this niche idea. It's survival, it's stability, and it's the foundation for real generational wealth. In the housing ordinance I'm introducing, we apply that same principle, the right of first refusal to tenants. If a landlord wants to sell a rental property, tenants now have a clear, fair pathway to buy the building themselves. And if they need help, a nonprofit with a proven track record and a mission to preserve affordable housing could step in and purchase it on their behalf. This ordinance is about saying to tenants, you matter, your stability matters, your right to remain in your home matters. And in practical terms, what does this mean? It means less displacement, it means more tenant power, it means that our affordable housing stock isn't decided in spreadsheets but in living rooms. Let me also say this, Madam President, this is not anti-owner, this is not anti-business. In fact, what we're doing is creating new pathways for business succession, for dignified transitions, and for neighborhood root and reinvestment. Because let's be honest, when properties and businesses are sold behind closed doors, our communities don't just lose jobs or housing, they lose agency, they lose their voice and what happens next. These ordinances give them that voice back. So to sum it up, if we believe in community, if we believe in the people who make profits run, the tenants, the dishwashers, the childcare workers, the janitors, the line cooks, that we must believe in their right to ownership when opportunity arises. These two ordinances, colleagues, are about creating those exact opportunities, giving people not just a right to remain, but a right to rise. So I urge you all to support this as a move to committee for worker power, for tenant dignity, for the right of first ref-
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion, items 11 through 18? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item 11 and 12 to the Committee on Finance, 13 through 15 to the Committee on Ordinance, 16 to Finance, and 17 and 18 to the Committee on Hope.
So noted.
Item 19. We do have a microphone issue tonight. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Please refer item 19 and 20 to the Board of Contract and Supply. Item 21. I'm sorry, item 21? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Graves, did you vote no on item 19? Is that what you're, you'd like to say? Yes? Okay. Sorry, thank you, Darius, for helping us with our microphone issues. So, for item 19, Madam Clerk, we have 13 ayes, one nay. The motion passes. Item 20, 14 ayes. Item 21.
Madam President? Motion to weigh the reading over item 21 and 22.
Next, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 21 and 22? Councilman Vargas?
No, I was going to, I wanted to go no on 19. Can you refer me?
Madam Clerk, is that possible at this point? We already called it? Okay.
My microphone, item.
Hold on one second. All right, the opinion of our city solicitor and clerk is that we've already called the vote and closed that issue. So we can't undo that vote on item 19. Item 21, Majority Leader.
Madam President? Motion to weigh the reading over item 21 and 22.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second on item 21 and 22. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Please refer both to the Committee on Finance.
So noted.
Item 23.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading over item 23 through 27, and pass on a voice vote.
Second at motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 23 through 27?
Madam President?
Madam President?
Right.
Thank you. Madam President, can we please read item 24 into the record, please?
Whereas more than 700 frontline healthcare workers at Butler Hospital, represented by SEIU 1199 NE, have been on strike since May 15, 2025, due to unresolved issues involving wages, staffing, and workplace safety. And whereas, these workers include nurses, mental health, mental health counselors, environmental services staff, food service workers, and other essential personnel provide critical care and support in one of Rhode Island's primary psychiatric facilities. And whereas, Butler Hospital is operating with chronic staffing shortages caused in part by uncompetitive wages and unsafe working conditions, with some positions starting as low as $15.30 an hour, and long-tenured employees earning less than $26 an hour despite decades of service. And whereas, the frequency of workplace violence at Butler has sharply increased in 2025, with frontline staff reporting serious injuries, including concussions and physical assaults, and management refusing to accept union proposals to improve safety, oversight, and response. And whereas, instead of investing in its workforce, Care New England has chosen to spend millions of dollars on out-of-state temporary staff with limited familiarity with the needs of psychiatric patients while attempting to illegally terminate health coverage for striking workers, some of whom are pregnant or managing injuries and chronic illnesses. And whereas, the union's demands are clear and just. They are asking for wages that lift workers out of poverty, no cuts to healthcare, and no reduction, reductions in pension contributions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council stands in full solidarity with the striking workers of Butler Hospital and calls on Care New England and Butler Hospital leadership to immediately return to the bargaining table in good faith and negotiate a fair contract that protects worker dignity and public health. Be it further resolved that upon passage, a copy of this resolution shall be sent to the President and CEO of Care New England, the President of Butler Hospital, and the leadership of SEIU District 1199 NE.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on items 23 through 27. Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll keep my remarks brief, but I do want to speak quickly on item 24. Thank you so much for putting this resolution forward, and thank you all for, for being here today. We want to make it clear that the Providence City Council stands in full solidarity with the workers and their families, because their families are being impacted just as much as the workers right now. It was reported in the past week, or May 31, I believe, that Butler Hospital and Care New England took away the, the health insurance. This is a tragedy of, there's so many folks that depend on their health coverage to, to live, literally to, to live. It's insane that we're here in, in 2025 and we're seeing actions by corporations, by Butler management, like this one. So I, I know, Council President, that, that you've been a strong voice, and I appreciate that. Anything else that, that we can do to support and uplift your efforts in, in this fight, please, please count on us, because together we, we are stronger. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, items 23 through 27. Councilman Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I've spoken a lot today, but I, I did not want to pass up to thank my union brothers and sisters who are here tonight. I want to make a comment. Counselor Sanchez and I had joined the picket line, maybe last week or two weeks ago, and these folks were not, you know, perhaps like what was maybe perceived by the administration as these like rambunctious folks trying to break the noise ordinance. In fact, it was quite the opposite. I want to just share a story. When Counselor Sanchez and I showed up in support, in that moment, there was a swarm of Probst Police officers in the neighborhood because a child had gone missing. And so our union brothers and sisters had stopped whatever they, they were doing, and they went out throughout the east side to look for this child as they were protesting terrible working conditions and wages. So these are good people that want the best for their families and for their patients. And so I wanted to share that, Council President, because as it may have been mentioned, you are all not extremists or a rat, or a radical group. You are folks who live here and trying to get by. So shout, shout to you all, and don't give up the fight.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, item 23 through 27. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 28 and 29.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second on item 28 and 29, any discussion?
Madam President.
Pro Tem Pichardo.
At the appropriate time, if you could have item 30. Actually, we're on 29 now.
We're on 29. Discussion on 28 and 29? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer 28 and 29 to the, I'm sorry, 28 to the Committee on Finance and 29 to ERP.
So noted.
Item 30.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 30 and 31 and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Pro Tem Pichardo.
Uh, yes, at the appropriate time, if you could have this resolution read, please.
Madam Clerk.
Whereas the Secong Wampanoag are part of the larger Wampanoag people but are not a federally recognized tribe. And whereas, the lack of recognition by both the federal government and by the state of Rhode Island prevents members from receiving the full benefit of relevant opportunities for federal education, job training, and housing benefits, as well as federal protections for the sale of artwork, public and private grants directed toward Indian tribes or groups and their members, the participation of the tribe and its members in traditional religious practices and ceremonies, the protection and preservation of burial sites and artifacts, and the selling of genuinely Indian-made handicrafts by tribe members. And whereas, if enacted, H5733 would grant limited purpose state recognition as a Native American tribe as permitted by the Bureau of Indian Affairs of the United States Department of the Interior, rendering the Secong Wampanoag eligible for those aforementioned opportunities and protections. And whereas, state recognition will allow the Secong Wampanoag, the majority of whom are Rhode Island residents, to more vigorously establish and protect their heritage and traditions as they have sought to do four times previously before the Rhode Island General Assembly. And whereas, recognition by the state would merely be mirroring legislatively the actions taken by the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs in 1997 and its recognition of the Secong Wampanoag. And whereas, the history and perseverance of the Secong Wampanoag are inextricably tied to the history of Providence and of Rhode Island, with significant portions of the land upon which the Secong Wampanoag historically resided, and the towns and cities of the East Bay were founded, conveyed by deed to or due the, to the negotiation of Roger Williams, founder of Providence and of Rhode Island. And whereas, the Providence City Council wishes to convey its gratitude to the Rhode Island General Assembly for its sincere consideration of this matter. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council strongly supports H5733 and urges the General Assembly to pass this resolution to grant the Secong Wampanoag tribe state recognition. Be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to lead sponsor Representative Scott Slater, Speaker of the Rhode Island House of Representatives, Kay Joseph Shakarchi, President of the Rhode Island Sedent Valerie J. Lawson, and the remainder of the Providence delegation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pro Tem Pichardo.
I move passage.
Any further discussion on items 30 and 31? Councilwoman Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute and to rise in full and strong support to item number 30. As a former East Bayer, a townie, Wampanoag was, I remember, it's far back, not that far back, but far back enough where it was the Wampanoag Mall, and you can still drive through the Wampanoag Trail. Don't be fooled by the change of the name, it's still the Wampanoag Trail. One of the things that I had the honor of, of, of being able to, to be taught was a little bit of the crucial role that the Wampanoag tribe actually had with our pilgrims and things, and I had that. I was able to learn some of that history because I had a really great teacher to be able to, to, to teach us some of that in a time decades ago where we weren't actually really talking about the indigenous population and their contributions here. But that teacher wanted us to always remember just how important they were to our East Providence community and our townie community. So I just wanted to rise to fully support and embrace this opportunity of being able to recognize the Wampanoag tribe and, and giving them the opportunities that they well deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on item 30 and 31? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 32.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 32 and 33.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. The sponsor, Councilman Vargas.
Thank you very much, Madam.
All right, that was an ask for discussion, by the way. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you for the support. This resolution is coming by surprise that we own property outside the city, and we are, we own a beautiful, very valuable property in the town of Noragansett, that we've been paying taxes since 1957. We know returns, nothing comes back. 1957, we bought it for, it doesn't say how much we bought it, it was 28 acres, and then in 1980, we sold 26 acres to DM for $775,000. So we only have two acres left. Out of those two acres, we put in money more than $1.5 million. That was alpha money, the money that can be used in the city for something else, to help homeless, create more housing. But we decide, or whoever decide to use it, that's fine. The value of this property, according to the town of Noragansett, is $1.4 million. Plus, 1.5 that we invest has a value more than $5 million. I don't want to say like an exact number because we need to do, attach, assess or something to, to get a real value. But what caught me is for the last 10 years, we haven't used this property. No plans, no plans from the administration, what we're going to do with it, or who's going to be using with it. So in the sad part is that in 2021, we almost lost the property in a tax sale for $16,721. We are a bad taxpayers too, though, the whole city. But if you, if you don't pay your property, they come after you. Make sure you pay your taxes next time. So costing the taxpayers $34,556 back in 2023 to redeem the property back to the, to the city. My proposal is, because they don't have no plans, give the mayor the permission or authorization to sell the property, bring the money back into the city of Providence, do something with it, keeping us trust, and out of the interest that we get, we, we can help a lot of people. We can disperse the money. It's no clear plan despite capital upgrades on this property. So I'm asking my colleagues to, to support me or support this resolution to sell this property. If the administration say we don't have the appraisal, I'm working on it to get another solution to get appraised the property, and we will know how much money we have. Because I am sure my community doesn't know where this property is, and they never use this property. Because it's no communication between the administration and the community, say, look, we have this camp where you can go. We haven't used this property for the last 10 years. Somebody is using it, but not, not, not the city of Providence. Please think about it and support this resolution. Thank you. I have another resolution to talk about. This is number 33. Requesting a question to amend the waste management contract. It's insane that last year, we went through the same process. They make the contracts, they sign solutions, and they bring it to the council like a week before the expiration date. This little game has to stop. Why we have to go along with everything where the administration is signing and having contract on our taxpayers' money? I got elected to represent my community. My community doesn't go to the meetings because they work in three jobs, to pay their taxes, to pay their water bill, to pay the sewer bill, and to pay their mortgage. For four people to make decision, and they call this transparency? It, this is not transparency to me, because I never got a phone call saying, Councilman, we work in the waste management contract, what is your input? And not going too far, and I am a chairperson of the Public Works Committee. Oh, you are a public, oh, nice to meet you, oh, great. No. We are council people to represent our people. Remember, the administration doesn't represent my people. I do. So they make decision, I better watch out what decision they making that is going to affect my community. $57 million, a five-years' contract, that's a long time. We don't know if we come back next year or next election time, but with, I'm sorry, but West Management is going to be super happy because they have a contract. Nobody else will be able to touch them, even if we do amendments, with no penalties. And then they will come and, oh, this is what we have, we've been doing a great job. I know what they're going to say, though. They're very professional company, and it's a national company. We can ask them for electric trucks, or so many, whatever you want, 10, 5, 20 new trucks. They bring it in tomorrow, and they put it around the city hall, just to make us happy. And they will say, what else do you want? You want a hamburger, too? No. We want the best contract for the city of Providence, but this contract is out of hand. We will pay $1,100,000 for to pick up yard waste and Christmas trees, where DPW and Parks Department has three trucks to pick up this. We can subcontract these items to a small company, like my colleagues were saying the other day. We have to give the opportunity to a new company to start. When waste management start, they start with a mule and a carriage to pick up trash. Please consider and let's work on how we can get a better contract to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on items 32 and 33. Councilman Reyes.
Madam President, I just want to speak on item 32. I think my colleague just laid out honestly logical points about the camp. I'm going to abstain from, from, from this because I, I didn't have adequate information to cast an informed vote on this. I, I will just say this, what's playing on my mind right now are the oral stories growing up in Providence that the OGs, impromptu, would tell me about this campsite, and how children in the urban core, the only access they had to outdoors in a real way was this camp. And that keeps playing in my mind. And I view, I generally view, public assets to be very precious and sacred. And that, in my view, they don't always have to turn out a profit. That sometimes, public assets to keep them are expensive. But those are, what's behind that are values. And I just don't know if we've planned and strategized enough around this and what to do with this. I hear you on all your concerns about how we've let this, the previous administration and the transition to this new administration. In that process, we've let it go and had to pay the backlog of property taxes to get this back. But I just hear all the OGs that spoke to me about growing up and their experiences at this camp. And I just, in good faith, can't let this public asset go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, thirty-two and thirty-three. Councilwoman Graves.
I'm in full support with my councilman. We're in dire straits now. That place has been empty for ten years. Memories are wonderful. But you can keep your memories and your pictures without holding on to something that we really can't afford to hold on to. I truly believe that we should not be paying for something in another city when we are telling our constituents how much they have to pay for things that are here now, that their everyday life is being affected. We need to take that money and give it to them in some shape or form. So I would have to go with thirty-two on that. Thirty-three, I am very frustrated with the city and the Waste Management Contract. Last year, we acted, they said, oh, we don't have enough time to change our mind, you know, blah, blah, blah. We're just going to have to do this. And we said, okay, we're going to only do this for one year. You need to be seriously thinking about doing something else. What happens, again, we're at the last couple of minutes. Now, we can't do nothing, but we're going to go into a five-year contract with something, a group that has been getting complaints for as long as I can remember. We can't keep doing this. What we're doing is, one of the things that I know a lot of us decided that we wanted to run for this office was to stop kicking the can down the road. We need to resolve some of these problems. We're not resolving this problem if we keep kicking and keep kicking and keep kicking. I am 100% for doing whatever we can to get this thing started. But if we keep bending over, because that's what we're doing, we're bending over to a monopoly. And I refuse to be strewed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, thirty and...
Madam President.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to address, I've heard a couple of times that we're voting on this. We're not voting on this. These are likely going to be discussed in committee. And they need to be discussed in committee because they're matters of significance to our balance sheet in our finances. Camp Cronin is a jewel for the City of Providence, has been for many years. I heard tonight, a question is why is upper dollars were used? Upper dollars were used to preserve a valuable asset to the City of Providence. It's important to our bond rating, it's important to our balance sheet. And I think that it would behoove the city to engage in a review, a financial review, to make a determination as to how we can turn that asset into another revenue stream, i.e. leasing that property, that very valuable property, which is why upper dollars were voted on by this council to be directed to Camp Cronin, to preserve it and to improve the condition of it. Again, of a vital asset. So I'm in favor of a healthy discussion. I know the administration is talking about a long-term lease. I think it's wise, it makes sense. And again, keeping that asset on our balance sheet, keeping a valuable asset, generating revenue, and reducing the expenses that would be charged or due to the city. So that's a good strategy and we need to look at it. Regarding thirty-three, I'm surprised to see this. I know I actually had planned on speaking on forty-two, but since I'm here, I can't resist speaking to the fact that this council and the administration engaged a commission, a trash commission. This isn't something we started working on in the past few months. Over a year ago, we created a Waste Management Commission. I had the honor of chairing it. Our goal was to improve outcomes. We looked at everything, we looked at a lot of data, we completed a complete review, reams of data, reports, discussions, deliberations in open meeting. We quickly understood that crafting a new RFP would be an essential component of moving forward. So I just am resisting the notion that this is something that was a knee-jerk reaction. This is something that a lot of work has gone into and a lot of deliberation in open meeting has happened. And also, I would like to remind my colleagues, at any time, we can call any vendor into committee. Why? Because that's our job. So it shouldn't be a surprise. And if you're not happy with the current outcomes, we have a duty and an obligation to pull the vendors into committee and have a discussion with them as to what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how can we can improve outcomes. That's our job. So just to remind everybody of that. Thank you very much for the time, Council President.
Thank you. Further discussion, item thirty-two and thirty-three.
Madam President.
Pro Tem.
Wasn't going to rise, but again, this is going to committee. But I did want to say regarding Camp Cronin, yeah, I was one of those that, young kids that, when they came from New York City, went there a couple of times, and I guess I could be referred to as one of the OGs. But it is a valuable property and also an identity for the City of Providence and for our kids in the future. What we have to do is figure out a way to actually better utilize it, promote it, get our kids there. I understand what my colleague Oscar Vargas is trying to do, is finding dollars to relieve us from this economic crisis that we're in right now. And we all should be looking at that budget right now, beginning today, and speaking to the chairwoman and the president and the leadership to figure out how to get additional dollars or cut some things, or if you have some other ideas of generating revenue. I don't think that while the property value continues goes up, including a beachfront, it's pretty valuable. But it's also a treasured item that the City of Providence calls its own. We have a lot of property also, or at least people claim that there's a lot of property that we as a city own, vacant schools, vacant buildings. Why aren't we turning those things over? We sit in the park commissioner, and we are Commissioner, Councilwoman Sue Andowa, we're waiting to see the skyline, that restaurant in that area being put forward so that way we can generate more money. We, as a city council, we need to ensure that we engage, especially now. So that way, when we are debating the budget, we don't have to, we won't stand up and say, why didn't you know? This is the time. Even though we rely heavily on the committee process and to have reports come out, yes, on the other item regarding the Waste Management. I know it's something that is dear to all of us, that we get to see that every week our garbage gets picked up. But I also understand that two years ago, we also had a discussion to try to see if we can establish that program, at least as a pilot program, to create jobs locally. And I don't know what the administration or the director, through the process of that task force that took place, I would have to review what, if that was discussed and so forth. But it is a good idea. So I commend my colleague for keeping the director, or at least the vision, to try to see if we can run a program at the local level and to also incentivize the local jobs. Because the years ahead of us is going to be very dire. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, counts, items thirty-two and thirty-three. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Please refer both items to the Committee on Finance. So noted. Item thirty-four.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading on item thirty-four through thirty-seven, pass for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items thirty-four through thirty-seven? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council President Miller?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Andropow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony?
Aye.
Majority Leader Espinal?
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves?
Aye.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo?
Aye.
Councilor Royas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Aye.
Majority Whip Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas? Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Aye.
You have fourteen ayes, one absent. The motion carries. The matters are passed for the first time on a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-eight.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading on item thirty-eight through forty, and pass on a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items thirty-eight through forty? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item forty-one.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading on item forty-one, pass on a voice vote, and refer back to the Board of Contract and Supply.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on item forty-one? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item forty-one to the Board of Contract and Supply. Item forty-two.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading on item forty-two, substitute and pass on a voice vote as amended and refer back to the Board of Contract and Supply.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Chairwoman Anthony.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I stand in support of item forty-two, and I would also like to talk about the substitution. This is a tough contract. I mean, it's a five-year contract. It is 57 million dollars. But this is the Waste Management Contract. This is our garbage collection and recycling and bulk items, white goods and yard debris. I appreciate Counselor Ryan and your work on the Trash Commission and your work on the RFP. The fact is that this Waste Management was the only qualified bidder who bid on these services. And I do appreciate the fact that we have counselors that would like to readdress, you know, possibly address the, you know, subtracting some of those services out and rebidding them. But frankly, we don't have time, and that would take months. And we don't really know if it would be a savings either because it would have to be bid out and it would be, we'd have to wait and see what those bids are. So we've had a company that many of us have had problems with. But I agree with Counselor Ryan. I think where we should be focusing is on their performance. And the amendments this evening is doing just that. We are requiring the Waste Management to come back with an annual report every year. They will have to appear before city council. I don't know what committee that will be. But they will have to explain what they've been doing and we can address our complaints with them at that time. This is a performance contract. If Waste Management isn't performing the contract, then yes, we as a city do have a right to terminate that contract. But I think where I see a problem is really in the coordination of the city around this Waste Management Contract. So I think what we need to do is look at how we are, how the complaints are being made. Are they being made through 3-1-1? Are counselors just calling Director of Public Works and complaining? How are we collectively as counselors addressing a system that works in terms of complaints? Fines? Are we fining Waste Management according to the contract? And we don't have any information on that. That's something we can do within the city. We can figure out what we're doing. We should be calling, and this resolution, this substitution also calls for DPW to come in, specifically to talk about recycling. We've all heard about this new truck that is capable of identifying exactly which house is mixing their recycles. What are we going to do with that information? I mean, I'm thrilled that we're going to have that information. We're actually going to have the information to educate that person first and define them if they don't comply. But that is all within the city. So we can start, I would urge quarterly meeting with DPW so that we can talk to them about, you know, what you're doing. What are you doing in the recycling? There's so many things that can be done in terms of how we manage, our handling of the Waste Management Contract. And I think that's really where we should focus. We, they have been providing our service. They're the only ones that can do it. And so I would speak, I would urge you to support this. Otherwise, we will have no trash pickup as of July 1st. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peterson and then Vargas.
Thank you. You know, I was in attendance when we discussed this particular contract in the Finance Committee. And I want to preface everything I'm about to say by thanking all the people that have actually put a lot of work into this. I know that the process, not only through the Trash Commission, but also the work that was done to engage in negotiations was long and probably extremely arduous. But I have to concur with what my fellow counselor Graves has said. We, although they are the only ones that are able to equip the needs of the city, our needs are not being met as substantially as we are all witnessing. I'm sure every single one of us has gotten a time or two, a phone call about how trash hasn't been picked up. So when we make the phone call and we take care of it, we're thinking that we're taking care of it, and they still haven't come the following day. And then one more time, you get an extra one that says, hey, day three, they're still not here. These are consistent issues that we often see that don't necessarily get reported on some sort of basic report. And while I applaud this substitution, one of the things that I think that we should do, independently of what my vote is going to be here, is that we, as a council body, perhaps engage in our own policy research in collecting the data on the amount of calls that we've gotten through our own constituent services and 3-1-1 to then report back when we do these meetings with the DPWs and the Waste Managements of the world. I think the only way that we're going to be able to hold them accountable is by also having to do some of that legwork. Because unfortunately, I don't necessarily think that we're all getting the consistency that we're looking for as we're about to embark on a 57 million dollar contract for five years. Solely based on the fact that I think that we should be doing this at a much more reduced amount of time so that we can continue to do research on better opportunities for us, I'm not supporting this contract today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilon. Further discussion, Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise and speak on two concerns regarding this whole contracting situation. The first one is, not only because I'm the vice chairman of the Public Works Committee, but just as a counselor in this body, to me, it's extremely concerning and disrespectful that none of this contract went through that committee or was discussed in any such way. Obviously, you don't want to give credit to Councilwoman Ryan and the Trash Commission that she put on. But the fact is that we have a Public Works Committee and the single largest contract related to Public Works wasn't even mentioned or discussed in said committee doesn't sit super right with me. And the next comment I want to make is in regards to the administration's efforts and apologize, I, to be honest, don't know how much of it was discussed in length in the Trash Commission. But to me, it is very clear that the administration did not do their due diligence in actually providing analysis or a report on what this might look like. like, internal, to do in-house, just for the folks that weren't in that Finance meeting. I asked a simple question. Does Hartford, does Worcester, do they do their garbage in-house, or do they have a third-party vendor? And that question wasn't able to be answered in that meeting of the folks from the administration there. So that shows me that, you know, such a basic question, a similar-sized city in our region, we should know that answer right off the bat. So like Counselwoman Peterson said, I think, you know, this is something that we need to start picking up on our end, as a council, using our policy staff and our research analysis to see what the possibility of this is going forward. Because this has happened three years in a row, that we put our backs against the walls in not enough time, and I'm not sure what's going to change between now and in five years. At the end of the day, we all know Waste Management is a multi-billion-dollar publicly-traded company that isn't going to do what Providence requires, or Providence passed, what the people of Providence truly deserve. And I think, you know, maybe there is a world where they do some contract work, but we need to give the opportunity to local companies. It was described to us that there was another vendor that applied for half of the wards, but just quite wasn't up to speed in terms of the trucks and the workforce. And that's where we need to take a lead as a city, to work with smaller, more independent companies when it comes to such a vital service here in the City of Providence, because that's something that all of our residents demand and require of us. At the very least, you know, we're having discussions about raising taxes, the cost of living, inflation is all extremely high. The basic service of getting garbage picked up is one that they a hundred percent deserve. Thank you, Madam President.
Thanks, Counsel. Further discussion, Counselman Vargas?
Question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to the Finance Committee, because it's hard work. It's not, it's not the chair's issue, it's the administration issue. They always bring the contracts at the last minute, just for us to make a decision in two days. We don't work full-time to go through every single contract and make the best decisions. But they know that. They know that we don't work full-time, and that's why they do this, and they say we'll give it to them two weeks before, and they will have to make a decision, yes, or yes, or yes. Okay, that's fine. This amendment, this amendment is an easy amendment for them. Anybody can bring my report, but I want to know if this amendment will say, look, if you're not doing a great job with waste, with yard waste in Christmas tree, I'm going to be able to take it away from you. I want to take it away from you, and you have to go down in your price. That's a million dollars that we have. In the meantime, we have people online that they will be able to do it for five hundred thousand. I got landscaping companies, they desperate to get something from the city, a little piece of the pie. But so far, I've been here three years, I don't see nothing that this administration has given to my community, to the small business community that we have. It's insane that they not share, they don't want to give it, not even to plow a sidewalk, not even to plow a sidewalk. And we are here like Latinos, we are six Latinos here, with forty-seven percent, or forty-five percent Latino community in this city of Providence, and we're not giving nothing to the Latino community? Now, we only going to give them a fifty-seven million dollar contract for five years. We want to secure waste management for five years. That's not right. That's not right. And we shouldn't stop the administration and say, look, you came too fast, we need to make an agreement. Do you have a backup plan? What happens if we don't vote for? Are you going to do an extension of a year for them? How are we going to be working? This contract is too big, and it's not right to give them a five-years contract. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Counselman Goncalves.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to keep my remarks short, but I think we really do need to heed the advice of the Finance Chairwoman. Come July first, I don't want a bunch of angry constituents saying, what's going to happen around trash and trash collection? I know that we're between a rock and a hard place, I'm really trying to be sympathetic to the other members of the council, but I think our recourse is, we can pass this tonight, and as the Chair of the DPW Committee, I think you should call a meeting right away and make sure that the vendor is being held accountable. All the concerns that you have, and all the concerns that we all have, we should have an opportunity to make our voice be heard. And I think it's just, we're up against such a tight timeline here. We can't bid this out. If we tried to rebid this, to go before the Board of Contract and Supply, I mean, that's going to take months, and that's potentially a dire situation, where we do not have trash collection and all of the other amenities that they're providing. And I hear you, I think we should be critical of Waste Management, I think we need to hold them accountable, but I urge us to pass and then call them in and ensure that they're being held accountable, and we're asking all the questions and getting all of our concerns and issues addressed during that time. So I hear everybody, I just don't want to be in a situation where we don't have trash collection come July first. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Thank you. Will the Chairwoman yield for a question? Just a, in the committee, there was a no vote taken just to, for us to debate it on the floor, is that correct?
Madam President, there was a motion that was made and approved to refer it without a recommendation, so there were members of the committee, it was a four-to-one vote, it was then one nay, that referred it to the council, because they thought that the council as a whole should make the decision and not the Committee on Finance.
Thank you.
Mine was a nay. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to have that clear, because as it was reported, it was, in time, things are referred out of the committee without a vote, but I just wanted to make sure that that is clear. And so my other question was, if, not that I'm recommending this, not that I'm asking any members to vote against this, but if for any reason, a contract does not get approved, and it goes back to discussion, and RFP and so forth, does the city still work under the old contract for the trash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No. The contract is over. It's terminated.
So the end of the contract is July first, is that what?
Correct.
June 30th?
June 30th.
Okay, thank you very much. So just for clarification, and also for all of us that perhaps have gone to the committees, or have not been able to read or see the conversations, and also the wonderful work, or the work that's been done through the Trash Commission, I just think that over the years, we've talked about how to actually best have a company that best provide the services to the city. But one of the things that is clear to me, and we point out to the Waste Management, and we're not, and I keep hearing, that we're not happy with Waste Management, the way they do their business, the way they are accountable to the city, and even to the City Council. And I know that there was a discussion of having at least a liaison with the Waste Management Company to the city and to the City Council, to ensure that things are done differently. And I think the Councilwoman Ryan can speak to that specific. I just want to make sure that while we're discussing this, and we're going to pass this, for those of us who may vote against it, just sending a message in essence that we're not happy, it was going to pass. But I just think that for us, we have to send the message that Waste Management needs to change their practices to the City of Providence, to be accountable to us as City Council people. And I know how, now that, this is my third year, our, most of us' third year, and those who's been here for now their second term, we all know that during the discussion of budgets, any administration, in this administration, could be more attentive to all of us. But once the budget is done, things get done, and the work that is done by the Chair, sometimes directors or departments are not fulfilling their requirement and being accountable to us. And that's what I hear every time my colleague, Oscar Vargas, gets up. He works hard, just like the Vice Chairman and many of us. I think DPW is one of those that, one of those department, that when we come out in our district, whether we walk, whether we drive, we get more calls on the quality of life, and it has to deal with trash, and it has to deal with mattresses, things being out in the community for weeks, even if we call them. I think that the practices need to change at the Waste Management level, the company, and also with the directors and the administration. And that needs to be, I wanted to say that, but I think all of us, in summary, is that we're not happy with the process, or even this company, but that they have to change, and for us not to just wait for them to change their ways. And I get it, they all sign a contract for five years, and they all read through the fine print. And I hope that the administration, and our staff, and all of us, have really looked at that contract, so that way the work is done. But lastly, is that we're signing a five-year contract, so the work has to continue if we're going to renegotiate this as a city in five more years. So that way, start thinking about how best to, for us to create different programs for local companies to create jobs at the local level, and to have more accountability at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselman Andropow? Oh, I'm shocked. Oh, sorry, Counselman Ryan.
Got a little line in my head, so.
Counselman Andropow, and then Counselman Ryan.
Awesome, I'll be a little quick, but thank you, President Miller. Look, I hate giant corporations more than the next guy. I hate that I'm voting yes on this contract, so I just want to say that upfront. But I think it's on us now to do our jobs, built into this contract are the opportunities for lots of fines and fees for when they mess up. We have not been holding them accountable. We can bring them, as Counselwoman Ryan said, to any of our committees at any time, we have that subpoena power. They could come before Finance, they could come before DPW, they could come before our Special Committee on the Environment. We can be doing our job every time there's a problem. Like, look, there was a guy who was driving the Waste Management truck, who was urinating in the public, in my ward constantly. Like, that's messed up. I do not love that we are about to sign this contract. But we held him accountable, and he was now, he was disciplined, and Waste Management was fine. We need to do our jobs to call this out, this is on us, and I hope that the mayor is watching, or his staff are watching, it's on them as well, to actually use the fines and fees that are built into this contract, so that we can get the good service that we want, because we deserve, our residents deserve good service, and we deserve good service, and to be listened to. And big companies listen to you if you find them, and you make them accountable to their contracts. They're not going to do it out of the goodiesies of their hearts, they're going to do it if they have to pay, and they're going to have to deal with us, coming to committee and having to pay these things. So I just, I'm going to vote yes, I hate that I'm voting yes, I do not love the process, I agree with my Councilman, my fellow Councilman Vargas, that we get our backs put up against the wall here, I'm disappointed in this, but also with taxes going up, I am not going to take calls from my residents on July one, when they say, hey, I just got my tax bill, and also my trash isn't getting picked up. So we need to sign this contract, and then we need to do our jobs and make sure that it runs well. So thank you, and I hope you join me in voting yes.
Thank you. Counselman Ryan.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you colleagues for your remarks on this important contract. I rise in support of item forty-two in this contract that is before us. I would like to remind everybody that we haven't, we didn't have an RFP for trash services since 2017. This administration and this council has been laboring along with a contract that was practically unenforceable and a challenge. We had difficulty holding Waste Management accountable. This council and the administration had the forethought to establish a commission, so that we could do a deep dive into our Waste Management system. The reality is, we have the best trash services in the state. We recognized early on that we needed to do an RFP, and we needed to be very specific as to the language we put in that RFP. We had poor communication with Waste Management. When we looked, we looked at everything, and I honestly wish many of my colleagues joined us in those meetings. They were fruitful, they were forensic. We looked at data from all of Rhode Island, we looked outside of Rhode Island, we looked at complaints, we looked at the nature of complaints, of the complaints. And again, we had a thorough review of all the data, we had a healthy discussion and deliberation, and I'm, I pat you guys on the back, because quite frankly, many of the things that you raised, we spoke about in this commission. And we crafted the RFP with language to address many of our ongoing challenges with managing Waste Management. The reality is, and Chairwoman Anthony stated, we have before us an enforceable contract. It's a good contract. Do I like the fact that it's fifty-seven million? Absolutely not. But our constituents demand great trash services, and that's what the cost is. I heard people ask, why is it five years? Well, quite frankly, we wouldn't be able to afford a shorter contract, and everybody knows, when you go out for contracts, the longer the contract, the less costly it is, because you're making a longer-term commitment to the vendor. So a lot of consideration. Also, I heard tonight about complaints. Yes, we get complaints, but when we looked at the complaints versus the service that is provided to the number of folks that we provide service to, they were minuscule. And we felt that we could address those challenges through communication. So we requested a dedicated person that would be able to work with the council office, work with council people, to address challenges that may emerge, because we all know there's blips in service, no matter what your service is. But the reality is, we have a dedicated system to respond. We have the built-in internal controls and expectations on both sides, so that when we have a problem in a ward, they don't linger, they don't languish, that Waste Management will be held accountable. We have fines built into this contract, and yes, we can even sever the relationship if we're not happy. I like the resolution that was put forth tonight, amending this contract, basically suggesting that we have an annual report, a review, an annual report card, so to speak. And when I was asked about this, how I felt about it, I said, I think it's fabulous. It's a formalized process of allowing the council to look, call Waste Management in, look at what they're doing, and making sure that the outcomes are what we expect. So it's a wonderful tool, I think it was well thought out, well done. The contract itself, however, has an onerous obligation from Waste Management to report, to provide reporting to the administration. And again, any committee, be it Finance, be it Public Works, can call any vendor in at any time and say, hey, we have problems, we're not happy, what's going on? The administration welcomes, we're often the stick, to make sure that we can bring everybody in line. I can honestly say, when I first saw the amount, I thought it was a bit high, but then I looked at the contract, I'm confident, and I can say to everyone, that the terms of the contract satisfy all of the matters that were raised in the commission, by commission I really like, there's solid deliverables, there's appropriate and ongoing communication, essential regular analysis and reporting, and there's an expanded fleet of trucks, there's twenty-one trucks that service our city. Not one, not two, twenty-one trucks. And we've, under the old contract- And we've, under the old contract, we had old trucks that would go out of service, which was oftentimes, if we did have a breakdown in service, it was because we had a truck that failed. We had holes in the bottoms of the trucks, they would have to be taken out of service. In this contract, we have 21 trucks, and each truck costs about $500,000. It's huge. The trucks are equipped with smart technology to provide real-time video services to verify what's going into those trucks and what contamination there is. Everybody knows that one of our big challenges are contaminated loads. The smart technology is a tool that is used in other communities successfully, and we're going to use it in our community to try to reduce the contaminated loads. The contaminated loads are very near and dear to me because that is the reason why we created, we passed the plastic bag ban, which I'm very proud of that, many years ago. But anyway, it's cost us, back then, it cost us about $700,000 or $800,000. We're up over $1 million on contaminated loads. So we need to do a better job. Waste managers is aware of it, we're aware of it. The administration will hold them accountable. I think the smart truck technology will help, and as Councilwoman Anthony stated, we're finally going to have real-time data that we can analyze. I really like the one staff member, dedicated staff member, that is our go-to person, and we will be accountable for the deliverables. Waste management in this contract has also made a solid commitment to assist the city in public education with the goal of expanding awareness concerning the methods of reducing, reusing, and recycling waste materials and reducing contamination, as well as helping us with community events. That's big. A lot of people, even in my ward, when we have our monthly community meetings, we always go over, what can you recycle? We have tests, and I'm amazed at how many people fail that test we have every month. But we have to do a better job of educating folks what can be recycled and what can't. The old rule, if in doubt, throw it out, is the best guidance we can give to anyone, because the cost of the contaminated load is unbearable, quite frankly. It's important to note that this contract, while essential, and if we don't pass it, we won't have trash pickup on July 1, just throw that out there. It's one piece of the larger waste management system, which includes the Office of Sustainability. Their essential trash diversion strategies are critical. We can't do a better job of recycling and reducing our costs unless we have successful diversion effort strategies and basically a system. I want to thank my council colleagues. I see often you have e-waste, mattress pickups, all those events we have. I'd like to see one every month in every one of our ward. There's 15 wards. We could have one a year very easily. That's critical, because every, every amount of trash that we divert from our waste dump helps us. It helps our environment, it helps our economy, and it also helps our bottom line. So in conclusion, I urge you to support this contract. It's not a knee-jerk reaction, it's something that we've been working on, and it absolutely addresses all of the matters that came before the Trash Commission, each and every one of them. So I would like it to be less money, but it is what it is. We have a wonderful trash system, we need to do a better job of it. And we finally, if you join me and vote yes, we finally have a contract that we can manage and enforce. And I think that, at its root, is the most, the best thing about this contract. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vargas?
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity. I travel a lot. When I went to Europe, I see the managers, want the broom, want the water, and everything, and very nice, clean. And here, in Rhode Island, what I see is a lot of rat. The container is broken because that company take the containers and they pick up the garbage, and then the top is gone away, broken. So, so many things. And this is not fair, can bring this contract the last minutes. Imagine, can we see sometime, Anna, my garbage not pick up for any issues? We have to wait for another day. Imagine, it's not pick up in summertime, because the smell is like crazy. So, we don't have choice. We have to vote, yes or no, but we have to vote, because who pick it up? You weaken, want to receive so many people to call you and say, Anna, what going on? Because I receive some call, because this is not fair for the contamination. Because before, for the matre, people had to pay $16, and now Marino, my park, has to receive all the matre that people don't want to pick up. And then we have to call it, and we have to do this, and that, no, this is not fair. We need and we deserve better our community, better pick up the garbage. This is very important for our communities. Not for me, it's for everybody. One day, it's not passed, that container is infl- you know, a lot, for my community. I don't know somebody else, but in my community, people like it to eat, people like it to do so many things, and then you go around, because I go around, to see if they have the container right. So it's like this, putting more and more. So for me, it's not fair, can have one contract, the last minutes, and next month, we receive so many call, can we not pick? That's my only suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Graves, have you spoken on this item already? Okay, so Councilwoman Harris?
Absolutely. I have to stand in support of this contract tonight. I have been a part, I witnessed a time in this city when trash wasn't picked up under the third, I don't want to call by name, but the third mayor before this mayor we have now. I witnessed that, and it was from Onyville to South Providence. It was a horrible, horrible odor. I had just came back into the city from visiting from somewhere else and was exposed to something that I didn't ever, ever think we would have to go through. I remember as an organizer, deer right in the city, and saying, we're going to protest the next day if you don't get the trash. So I feel like a lot of the communities, a lot of the neighborhoods that really, really get neglected, like Councilwoman Vargas said, are the neighborhoods that generate a lot of garbage. It does generate a lot of garbage. I'm in fear, if I don't vote on this contract tonight, that my neighborhood will be piled up with garbage on the fifth day of July. So I am not going to vote against this contract tonight. I am voting for it, and I hope everyone else does too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, Councilwoman Espinol?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very moved and happy to see all my colleagues with such a strong interest in trying to make things better and making sure that our city runs better and more efficient. I first like to, I'll be brief, but I want to point to the Councilor Ryans and the work that she did in the Trash Commission. I served as her vice chair, and I'm a witness to everyone, every expert that we brought in to make sure that we were going to move forward with an effective system and that we'll be able to render good service to our city. I also like to recognize the work that the Finance Committee did while vetting this contract. But I tell you, I am moved by Councilman Vargas's remarks, his interest in, that he has involved in this, as he's also doing what we're all doing. We're looking for savings, and we're trying to improve our services. So when he reached out to me, I joined sending a letter to the administration and to the Council of Finance, to the Chairwoman of Finance, looking to improve things. But unfortunately, the letter that we got back, I can understand. I can understand why it takes, it would not be prudent at this time to take those matters into consideration. I served on the Board of Contract and Supply for a year or two, and I know how long that can take. The procurement process, to get something through, the bidding process, it takes time. So this contract here, while I don't think it's perfect, a lot of things perhaps could have happened to it to make it more efficient, it's the one that we have, and it's actually the one that's going to keep our city clean. We are being judged by our actions, especially now that we're, more than likely, we've been raising taxes. The last thing that you need is by the end of the month, when if taxes do go up, then our garbage does not get picked up. It's our responsibility to render good service. I'm not happy with the contract, because I think it's long. But the length of time also, when you look at, is actually saving us money. Because the longer you come into a commitment, the more savings that you get. It's not a perfect contract, like I said, but the timing of this makes it the only one contract that we have, that we have, and the contract that I'll be voting for because I need to render service to my constituent. So I'm happy with it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? I think actually everyone's spoken. Councilwoman Graves?
Okay, I heard a lot about the price. It's not about the price to me. It's about the fact that we keep doing the same thing. For three years, not two, three years, we wait till the last minute and this happens. We have to stop. I don't see any bite in this. This resolution, where is the bite? What is, what are the penalties? What is going to really stop them from doing what they're doing? If they're getting $57 million, and we fine them 100, 500, you think that's really going to hurt them? There's no penalties, there's nothing, there's nothing in here. This resolution that you sent, just said, oh, well, they can come to a meeting. They came to the meeting. This is not the first time, they've been, you know, so every September, they're going to come to the meeting, and they're going to tell us everything's wonderful, or, well, we're going to work on that for five years. If you really want to do something, if we're going to do that five years, then we need to be making sure that we have a true task force. And we need to include members from this, from the city, not us, some of these people that are going through it. Because I have people, a street in my community that's never had a perfect pickup. There's always two, or three, or four, or five, six people that don't get picked up. Why? Because it's a one-way going, one-way, and it's, and then they have to go and do a difficult turn, so they don't want to do it. So, I want to fight for what's right, and Lord knows, I don't want no garbage parking up in front of my house. I don't want the rats running around. I don't want none of that. But sometimes, we just got to say, you know, enough is enough. We may not get this passed through, and it gets, and it goes through, but I think we need to at least have enough voices saying, enough is enough. And if we don't, five years from now, we're going to be doing the same thing. And we're going to keep on doing it. And as I refer to, and I, you know, I'm going to have to go back to my younger days. As I referred to earlier, I'm tired of being screwed. I really am, you know? I'm tired of my community being screwed, and I think what we need to do, if we're going to put something in there, then we need to start talking some serious cash. $1,000, $1,500, $2,000, okay, they broke up that garbage can, I don't care if that garbage can's five cent. It's $2,500 for you to replace that garbage can that you broke up. If we don't start doing this stuff, they're going to keep doing it. So as far as I'm concerned, I understand, I'm listening, and like I said, I don't want it either, but sometimes you got to stand, and mine is going to stay or not.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman.
I love that we're having a fiery conversation about trash. That being said, I need to take out the trash, so let's vote.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, hold on one second. Madam Clerk, we're going to do a roll call just for ease of counting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anadra.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Majority Leader Espinal.
Aye.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves.
No.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson.
Nay.
Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye.
Councilor Royas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan. Majority Whip Sanchez.
Nay.
Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilwoman Anna Vargas. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I want to say hi, because I don't want to receive my constituents.
Ma'am, it's yes or no?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilman Vargas.
Nay.
You have 10 ayes, 4 nays, 1 absent. The motion carries, the matter is approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 43, please. Pardon my allergies.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 43 and pass in a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 43? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 44.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of items 44 through 47.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 44 through 47? Hearing none. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you very much. 44.
Madam President?
I'm sorry, one moment. Please refer 44 to claims impending suits, 45 through 47. Note, as received, 48.
So noted. Majority Leader.
Motion, motion to weigh the reading of item 48 and pass in a voice vote.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on item 48? Councilman Goncalves.
Madam President, just a quick point of personal expression. I would like to acknowledge David Leach, who's been here the entire meeting, sitting through all the trash discussion. I know he's up for a vote before Finance, and appreciate his willingness to serve on the Board of Canvassers, and just want to give him a round of applause and thank him for being here and sitting through the entire meeting. So just wanted to acknowledge him for that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on 48? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. 49.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 49 and pass in a unanimous rising vote.
Second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to suspend Rule 12B of the Rules of the City Council to reschedule the Thursday, July 3, 2025, regular council meeting to the date certain of Tuesday, July 8, 2025.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to suspend Rule 16B of the Rules of the City Council in order to take a matter not appearing on a printed docket.
Second Madam President.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 50, please.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of item 50.
Thank, uh, second Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 50? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer item 50 to the Committee on Finance. So noted.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to adjourn, and tonight, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Joelle Cohen, Luisa Herrera, and former Congressman Charles B. Rango. May they rest in peace.
Madam President, before we adjourn, I also would like to bring up the name of a young lady. Her name was Jay Lee.
Her name was Jay Lee. I don't know her last name, 13 years old. Councilman, Majority Leader brought it to my attention last week that in my ward, she, young lady, 13 years old, took her life because of bullying. Just for a moment of silence, let's pray for all our young people at this moment, just a silence, please.
Thank you.
Second to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. I do have one announcement. We have a new addition to the council office family. Aaron and his wife did have their baby, Celeste. I will be dropping. I will be emailing folks if you want to give me like some words, I'll put in a card and I'll drop it off at their house. So thank you all so much.